Good evening, everybody. I'd like to open the December 18th, 2017 Board of Selectmen's Meeting and call it to order. At this time, is anybody taped in the meeting? Free Town and...
Board of Selectmen.
The Board of Selectmen. At 5:45, we have a Soil Board meeting. 6 o'clock, we have a public hearing regarding the Water Street parking area. 6 o'clock, we also have a discussion with the Water Commissioners regarding the water extension on Chase Road. Under Other Business, we have discussed letter from the webmaster, Tim McIntosh, regarding updating virtual town hall. Discuss the letter of the Department of Conservation and Recreation for parcels 240-4 and 240-5. Discuss and sign Middleboro PEG agreement. Town administrators report under Florida Health, we have discussed having engineering review for all variances. Under Personnel, we have a change of status for Brittany Normandin and Chelsea Hester. Accept and sign resignation of Joseph Cowing. Sign and recruit training fee agreement for Nicholas Drinkline. Accept letter of resignation from Paul Dunn from the Tiff Board. And under New Business, discuss upcoming Board of Selectmen's meeting dates. We also have two executive session matters to go into. With that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Lauren. Thank you, Lauren.
I have permits that are up for renewal for the Soil Board. I did inspections on Sunday. We have six permits up for renewal. CCA had a three-year permit last time, so they're not up. And the operation on Dr. Brayley Road is going to cease.
Do you want to speak to the inspections that did...
Did you ask me to do that?
Do you want to speak to us?
Sure.
Kevin, you look very festive.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yesterday, Mark Rogers, new member, welcome aboard, Mark. Bob, Joe's, and I went up, did the Soil Board inspections, the yearly Soil Board inspections. For the most part, and I'll speak in generalities, for the most part, all the properties seem to be in compliance. There were a few that have, and this is typical of a gravel and sand operation, they had three-to-one slopes. Our regulations require three-to-one sloping at all times with only a certain amount of, I think it's 300 feet of open face, to be worth. A lot of times, that's impractical, but it is our regulation. So I think we ought to send a letter to the permit holders, reminding them of that particular... Everything else was fine, you know, the erosion control, the dust control caused it to, you know, a little bit of snow on the ground, so there wasn't an issue. You know, water control was fine, their entrances and egresses were fine. It was just in a couple of locations. The locations that we did inspect, just for the public's knowledge, we had one location on Slavbridge Road that is owned and operated by K.R. Rizendis. We have another one that's...
Just two copies of each.
Oh, there's two copies of each, okay, so I won't read them twice then. We have one located at South Main Street. The one on Slavbridge Road is more active, although they're not doing extensive work. They are taking some material out of there. Their biggest problem is actually getting water over there for the cranberry bogs. So they'll be excavating a water hole, I believe, next year. South Main Street, otherwise known as Payne's Cove, Greenie's Old Pit, that's basically been closed. They're stockpiling some material, they're not taking any new material out of the site, but they do want to keep their permit open. We had owned and operated by John Mello on Brayley Road. Very little to no activity done there. Matter of fact, it looked much the same as it was upon the last inspection. Again, a couple places that might be a two-to-one where there should be a three-to-one. So I think the letter reminding them of that should take care of that. Second one owned and operated by John Mello, this one's located on Chase Road. They do not and are not actively removing any soils. They use it as a stockpile yard. They bring in materials, process it, screen it, and use it. But again, this is one of those instances where you'd like to keep this Soil Board permit open, should you need to or want to take minerals or soils out in the future. Second one, Peter Borges on Copacabana Road, owned and operated by Peter Borges. Again, he'd like to just keep his permit open for future activity, but there is nothing going on there right now. There really is nothing actually happening on that one. And again, this is Copacabana Road for K.R. Rizendis. He's got two permits for the same location. This was talked while we were out there, potential solar. The site has been, I think, taken out to grade. They're finishing up with a fence that they had agreed to put up because they have, they have been blasting, and so there's a sheer face. So they're putting a fence up to protect the site. And I think that's another site where we need a gentle reminder on the three-to-one slopes. Again, it's not across the entire site, but a couple portions. We did speak to the operator on-site, and they were amenable to that. So with that being said, I'll make a motion that we grant all the permits. And if you'd like, I could... Do we have permit numbers on these? Yes. So I'll make a motion that we grant the permit, the one-year permits for permit 0535-18, 0533-18, 0530-18, 0529-18, 0527-18, and 0536-18.
And to clarify, we are closing the one on Spencer's Pit.
Mr. Spencer's Pit on Dr. Brayley Road, which was operated by K.R. Rizendis, they have not requested a new permit and have indicated to us that they're going to close it out. We went out there and did the inspection, everything is the way it's supposed to be, three-to-one slopes, the site is stabilized. It hasn't been utilized in many years. That was another situation where they thought that they were going to put a retention pundit for cranberry, and they just never needed it against it.
Are there any other regulations that we should submit to any of the permit holders that, other than the...
I would remind them to that overhangs, they need to alleviate overhangs, especially the vegetation on top of it.
Yeah, the, yes, the overhangs, the three-to-one slopes should take care of the overhang issue and the soil stability. Most of our regulations require an offset from the property line, so they're not, they shouldn't be up against the property line, but still, to Bob's point, a couple places we saw that where there's some bigger trees. So we can, again, remind them when we do that three-to-one slope, it's also to take care of any overhangs and to stabilize where there is vegetation, particularly trees that could be blown over.
You're going to make that party motion?
I'll make a second motion that we issue that letter.
Okay.
My second motion.
All right.
Just a point of order. I know we don't have a chairman quite yet, but we need to call the first motion. I don't think we voted on the first motion.
No, we haven't.
I made a motion, and it was seconded.
I didn't know if you wanted to amend that motion to include that, so that's why I did it that way.
If you want, yeah, okay, if you want, that's a good idea. I will amend my first motion.
Okay.
Second amendment? Voting on amendment, why don't we do that?
Yeah, voting on amendment, aye.
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 So, again, my motion, my motion will be amended to issue the permits additionally to send a letter reminding the operators of the three-to-one slope requirement, in particular paying attention to overhangs and the stability for vegetation.
I would ask that the next meeting, we have include a vote on chairmanship.
Is that my thing now?
Yep.
Sign though. Any other business in front of the Soil Board?
I think there's none.
This isn't that kind of operating.
You and Kevin share a family.
As Kevin says, a order to find if it all flows down.
That's it, darling. On the Soil Board, right, you told the board, go, the last one to sign, and they have to date correctly.
That's even an expert, you've got to date correctly.
Why don't we just put...
Well, he represented Concom, he represented Plan, and everything.
Yeah.
I don't really think it's like a...
You trying to get the driver on?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
We're on gas.
Only difference is thirty years ago, I was on the other end of that city.
That's right.
Right, so important, huh?
All right, everybody have a chance to look over that?
Yep. I'll make a motion to...
You have a second?
I'll second.
One favor? Aye. Abstain.
Abstain.
Yep. Thank you, is that it?
There's no bills.
Motion to...
Oh, no, I did, I submitted for, for maybe a week, maybe on the next Monday.
Motion to adjourn Soil Board.
A second.
Motion made, a second, any discussion of motion, and there are none on the field.
There's a multiple TRs tonight.
We're flowing, we're flowing.
She was trying to get on with it. That's what happens.
You're a little aggressive this evening, settle down. All right, so we have two things to fix. Which one do you want to report?
Yeah, I think so, because...
All right, we're going to do the public hearing regarding Water Street parking issues, since I believe most of you are here for that. Sorry, gentlemen. Do I have the fire chief, police chief, and highway, please? Fire, highway.
No questions.
Can I just leave this with...
Yes, I'm sorry, I need to...
What happened in '82?
Nineteen or eighteen.
So, the reason that we called this public hearing is because we've had multiple concerns regarding Water Street and parking, safety, vehicles not being able to pass, school buses not being able to pass, when vehicles are parked on both sides of the street. I know personally that last year, or might have even been a little bit before that, when we had the heavy snow, that I had talked to the highway surveyor, and we actually with my idea to even have a parking ban, because it's so difficult to pave, to plow that street when vehicles are there. But I, you know, we talked about it, and at that time, we concluded that, you know, it wasn't, it's probably something we should take care of in the future. It wasn't for something to take care of at that present moment in time. So I know there are pros and cons on both sides of the issue, but it is under the purview of our bylaws, which is under the purview of the Board of Selectmen. The use of public streets, sidewalks, and public places, these rules are adopted with the intent to promote the safe passage of vehicles and pedestrians along the public ways and within the town of Free Town. So that being said, we also need to make sure that emergency vehicles can go down safely without any prohibitive vehicles in the way. We want to make sure that, you know, that everybody is safe. And we do have that under the purview of the Board of Selectmen. And it says, "No person shall stand or park any vehicle in a public parking area, way or roadway under the control of the town, and no person or entity shall allow, permit, or sup up any vehicle registered in his or her name to stand or park in any public parking area, way or roadway, under the control of the town in violation of any rule, regulation, or bylaw, and in particular, any by following places except in compliance with direct direction or supervision of an officer or official traffic control sign or signal." And under that, it states, "Upon any roadway where the parking or standing of any vehicle will obstruct the normal movement of traffic." There's also under L., "Upon any public roadway in any such manner as to impede or obstruct the snow removal or plowing of any snow and ice, and also for public safety." So, that being said, I'm going to ask the highway surveyor for his, you know, his expertise.
The main reason we put up the sign originally was getting numerous complaints from residents and businesses, local businesses. We went down, we put the sign up.
Chicken, come on down.
Then, of course, we had all kinds of issues with that, so we removed the sign until we had this here. In the past twenty years that I've been here, we've never had an issue like this. It's just something that's come up within the last six months, a year maybe. I didn't realize it was as much of a problem, but I know we've had issues with school buses not being able to get through. So that's kind of why we put the sign up. I would think if we did a no parking on the southerly side or the left-hand side going down Water Street, maybe from Hathaway Park to the four corners, that might alleviate the problem. But in doing a little research in the last couple days, it sounds like basically it's a decision of the Board of Selectmen to take a vote, and if that's what you choose to do, I think this would be a prudent thing to do. We'll have the signs posted tomorrow.
All right, I think, like I stated, it is under the purview of the Board of Selectmen, but I also think it's important to hear from the public safety. And I will reiterate what I heard from the school bus. I don't think Ken Rizendis is here. Is he, Ken Rizendis? No? All right. I did have a conversation with him, which I'll share with everybody. Chief?
We have to get it through the press, we need at least ten and a half feet to get through the trucks, that's how wide his truck. So, as long as the block hydrants, again, like Mac says, in all this time, I've never heard issues of Water Street being a problem with parking until probably within the last six months. I started rooting, started swallowing those issues on there.
Okay. Chief?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, Mr. Rizendis contacted me with concerns about, you know, the school buses being able to pass without having to hopscotch parked vehicles on the south side of the road. I also spoke with the fire chief and the highway surveyor, who expressed their concerns, as they reported to the board. Historically, we haven't had any problems because residents have always parked on the north side of the road. I think that's probably because more of the homes, more residents are on the north side. So I think you have some options. You could do nothing. You could consider one way, which would probably be a big inconvenience for the residents, or you could, based on the information presented, post the south side, which has historically been the side that nobody has parked on, has a no parking zone. And I would follow the highway supervisor's recommendation that it be posted to prohibit parking on the south side from the four corners down to the entrance to the park.
The fourth option would be to post the entire street, no parking on both sides.
I think that's something we should consider, because if you park, if people have parked at the end of, just before Pleasant Street, and I know these, the school buses have a hard time if there's somebody in front of them, so if you had it on the, only parking on the north side, it may limit south side parking, the whole street, it'd be much easier for the buses.
I'll reiterate again, I did have a conversation with the school bus, and he does have a concern because he can't make that swing. If he has to do that, he would, if we don't do anything and we leave it as is, where people can park on both sides, he'll have to come up with an alternative route. It will cost the taxpayers more money, and not, not a significant amount of money, but there is an added cost to that. And parents would have to either walk their children down to the end of Water Street or to the end of Pleasant, because there would be no, there would be no access through. Hold on, hold on. I'm going to make this very poignant and very clear to everybody.
I have one other question before you go to public.
Before, I am, okay. But before we do that, there are ground rules. I know there are a lot of you here, and I want to hear from everybody. But I want everybody to be respectful and tolerable to each other, okay? All right, we'll hold off. I'm going to hear from the board first.
The, on Pleasant Street, I was on Pleasant Street today. Pleasant Street is parked, marked, no parking on the, I guess that would be the west side, is that correct?
Would you show a sign? I have to say yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Is it all Pleasant Street, do we know, or is it just for the, for the corner?
Just at the corner.
Just at the corner?
Yeah.
All right, so currently, west side, to make the turn, talking with the, with the school, the south side would make the most sense, because that would be able to make the radius. Okay, that was a question I had.
All right.
I have a question as a fire chief. Chief, when you say ten and a half feet, that's the width of the truck, correct?
In the mirrors.
In the mirrors. Okay, so that's even, but that's going to be a tight fit, at ten and a half. It's far more like twelve, fourteen feet.
Would be better, yeah, much better. We could squeeze through ten and a half.
Right, but to expedite the movement of vehicles.
Do you know what the width is, truck, of the street? Do you have any idea?
Chuck? Twenty-two, maybe?
I was going to say it's just about...
Chuck? Yes?
I've got it right here, if you'd like to reach behind you. Twenty-two foot, two inches.
Twenty-two foot, two.
Twenty-two foot, two inches.
Two takes.
Thank you very much.
Sign them up. All right, anything else right now?
I'm hoping so.
So I'm going to open it up to the audience, for those people that want to speak or have a question of any members of the board or any members of our panel. I'm going to ask that you stand, state your name for the record, and then add your question. Hold on, she had her hand up first, go ahead.
Just a question, because the fire hydrants and the mailboxes on Water Street are on the north side of the street. So if you put the parking down on the south side of the street, you're going to block the post office from delivering the mail and access to the fire hydrants. Second of all, there's narrower roads in Free Town, are those roads being looked at as well? Because there are narrow roads in the Free Town that people park on both sides of the street, where emergency vehicles can't, can't make their way down if both sides are being parked on. So why is Water Street being looked at?
Because we've had multiple concerns and calls.
I understand. So I called the highway edge department yesterday, and I was informed that there have been no complaints or surveys done on Water Street. So where are the written complaints, and where are the people to testify to that?
Sunday, you call?
I called, I even got an email back indicating there were no studies or complaints made.
No, I said no studies. I said, I thought no studies, but as far as complaints, I probably, my office has fielded probably no less than eight complaints from various businesses and/or residences.
Businesses on Water Street? I thought it was just the Assomment Inn, and that's gone.
Meaning, meaning fuel oil deliveries, produce deliveries, just residential landscape deliveries, that type of stuff.
Can you say your name and address?
I'm here from the bus company, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit late.
Oh, sorry, Ken, I'm going to have you speak in a second. If you want to sit down right over here, please. Can I have your name and address for the record, please?
Amy Palencia, Bullock Road.
Okay, thank you. So I also have received complaints from two different sources.
Did you bring them for appraisal? Because the public's entitled to see them as well.
There's one right in front of you, Ken Rizendis?
Hi. Good for you.
Go ahead. Ken, can you, I'm just going to backtrack a little bit, so people can hear, your concerns about the bus transportation on that road, and what if we had parking on one side, if we maintained parking on both sides, or if we said no parking on both sides, what that would mean?
I think if there were parking on one side of the road, we would easily access the roadway providing inclement weather. If we have a storm like we had years ago, it was pretty bad. So I think we'd have to use a little bit of psychology. But based on what's happened recently, the drivers struggle trying to get through there or reroute it. And I said, if this continues, I'm probably going to have to shut down that area of routing, which would affect people in that whole neighborhood. It's difficult enough to maintain a busload of children, let alone have to maneuver through something very challenging, or even in some cases, not make it through. I can't have a bus backing up. I can't have children in harm's way. So, based on the fact that this has transpired recently, I figured I'd contact you folks, and I apologize for my tardiness.
Oh, no, no problem.
I spaced out the meeting.
That's all right, no problem.
And someone said, "Tonight, Pleasant?" So, here I am.
Okay.
I apologize if it's affecting anybody in the room, but based on what I do for Eleven, it certainly impacts our business, and I don't want to affect the other people in the neighborhood.
I know.
Chief, have you had to respond, police personnel down to powers around for the school buses and stuff, school buses around?
No, we haven't, to my knowledge. I stand corrected, on one occasion, but we've just received calls about, like I said, concerns from the bus company, and again, I've spoken with...
I thought I saw a cruiser down there at one point.
I think that, that might have been a related incident with the sign posting, something along those lines.
Let me follow up to, I'm sure we can put an area in front of the fire hydrant where there would be no parking.
Well, it's against the law to park in front of a high...
I was going to say, like that, so, but we can clearly mark that, so there would be no infringement of harm to the water hydrant. Okay. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Kathy Konakis, Konakis and Sons Proggy Company, and I did put in a complaint to the office of the selectmen. And I also called an officer that was in town, that I almost took out a vehicle. I am wider than you are. I'm about sixteen feet, and my truck, we don't bend in half. And I called the officer, I saw him on the side, and I told him that I almost took out the car on the right to try to angle through, to get through on there. And I'm there four times a week, I'm in and out of there. And I'm doing this and putting the complaint in, not only for myself, for any truck that needs to go in there, the fire department, the ambulance, I don't care what you are, the school buses, whatever, it's impossible. We've been, we're a village, we get along. This is ridiculous, that it's come to this. And I've been in here over forty years, and we have never, ever had a problem like this. When the inn was in service, people from out of town, they never parked on that side of the street. They would park up the road, they'd park on the right, in that other field. It's never been a problem. We have a problem now. And I don't, I have to make deliveries, I have to get in there to make deliveries, and I'm there every week, so...
All right, thank you.
All right.
Anybody else?
And I have here many signatures from town people that agree with it, if you would like to see it. And they're all residents. And someone mentioned about narrower streets. I'd like to have the names of them. I'm on many of them. You mentioned streets, I'd like to name, see what they are, not dirt roads.
Direct your question to the board, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Steven Chandler, 112 Bullock Road. I have a question about the idea of shutting the whole street down to parking, because on that street, if I'm not mistaken, there are a few houses that don't have a lot of room to park off-street. So I was just wondering, wanted to bring that up, and...
Yeah, I believe he's right. There is a house that, I believe, has no off-street parking, at least not accessible from their property.
Right.
I think there was a curb cut, a curb cut there in the past, there isn't now, so I don't know if that's something we want to address, too, is if we could get them a curb cut. I don't know if they have the land for a curb cut to have, to access, but there is a couple of houses, that, those houses, some of those houses were built in the 1700s, so...
Right.
Right, I agree.
The road was a lot lower.
First three houses.
I would be in favor of banning parking, on-street parking. I feel we should be doing one.
I do, I feel we should be doing one outside.
Althea?
Yes, uh, that, I believe that is my house you might be talking about.
Why me?
My family for three, five years. There has never been a problem with people parking on the north side of the street. People have done it. When it snows, you find a place to get your car off-road so you're not impeding things. And it's only common courtesy to do it this way.
I, I think that's a good point. Uh, I've lived in this town all my life and people have always parked on the north side of the street. And it's kind of a shame that people can't, as a neighborhood, can't do that. And why they have to be here, and why we have to have, I have official rules for that. Because for, I've been here sixty-one years, I've known it for about fifty-five. People have always parked on the north side. As, uh, she said, people went to the zoning in. You never saw them parking on the south side of the street. They'd always be parking in front of the building. And the, the fact of the matter is, we have to get fire apparatus and large vehicles through and they shouldn't have to be impeded by someone trying to wind through or slowing down to a crawl to get around a vehicle, something like that. That's ridiculous.
Sir?
Yeah, I'm Jeff Morse, uh, on Water Street. I guess the question, I agree that should be only parking on the north side. This is sort of to the fire chief. Would there be a problem with people parking on the wrong, facing the wrong direction on the north side of the street? You know, sometimes you're supposed to face the direction of the traffic flow.
To answer your question, there is a problem. The, the bylaws require when you park, you park in the direction of the, you know, the travel lane, not counter to it.
Yeah, no, I was just, my question.
So that would be violative of the, you know, the by, parking segment of the bylaw.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anybody else?
I think, I think during the course of the years, the parking on one side never posed a problem, so.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Oh, okay, you're welcome.
Aye.
Um, I think the evidence is pretty overwhelming that it's what the neighborhood wants for the most part. I think it's a public safety issue. And on its face, it's an easy decision that we ban parking on the south side of Water Street. It would be my proposal to go all the way from Pleasant to Main Street to the four-corner intersection, the entire south side, except for where it's lawfully able to park in the parking lot for the Hathaway car.
Put that in form of a motion.
That is my motion, I, I apologize.
Do you want to have a second?
Second, man.
All right, any further discussion? During non-allos in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Please?
When you list, I'm sorry, Lawrence Warren on eleven Water Street?
Chuck, can you, um?
First thing for our morning.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
No, all the time.
All the time, all the time, twenty-four hours a day, no matter what season.
No, right, no parking, except for where the town pockets is a parking area there.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yes.
Okay.
I kind of recessed.
Literally in recess, uh, we bring up the water board.
So much, huh?
Twenty-five.
I don't even know this guy. I'm not usually like that.
Who is he?
Paul Shadick, I'm recording.
Steven Chandler, I'm recording.
Kevin Demaris and, uh, Free Town Lakeville tables, or who would, whatever it's called now, is recording on me.
Do you all want at least to take notes? I think you can put a goodbye card on me. Yeah, taste one, pass it down.
I asked you.
You want one?
No, I just have the hands from the four corners, it's not halfway across your face. Okay. I'm gonna clarify. In front of four corners.
That's not on the agenda, so.
That's no idea.
Wish me another one, 'cause he's on two boards.
Oh, Lisa, were you cooking? Did you cook these?
No, I just tried them here, you cooked them.
I've moved this stuff. No, I already have one, thank you.
Okay. Help me on camera, I can't say I didn't have a cookie tonight.
I can't, you kill me.
It's not as fun without you, Paul.
That's all right.
You know what?
We got all the laughs now.
I got a little, like I look like a peanut. Tell your mom it's good.
Okay, are we out of recess now?
I think we, the red light is on.
Okay, we are out of recess and back in action.
You hide your cookie. You're gonna hide it?
There's no hiding your cookie.
The cookie wanted to commit suicide, that's all. That's just like steel.
It's your shell that catches everything. Oh, too funny. All right, so, um, I asked you guys to come in, um, because, again, we're talking about the water line extension from Brayley Road down to Chase Road. And, um, we're teetering back and forth whether this is just a police station subcommittee decision or whether really this is a Board of Selectmen decision. And, um, we really, the three members here, um, and you all, didn't have a really good conversation at, at the police station subcommittee because it was new information. We all needed time to digest it. So, um, that being said, that's why I think we're here now. We should have, um, a concise conversation, an open conversation with the pros and cons of whether it behooves us to, um, have this water line go down to, um, to the police station site on Memorial Drive. And I call it the police station site, but it's really not a police station site. There's fifty acres there. It'll be for other buildings as well, Council on Aging, Library, um, or whatever the, like, building planning committee has. And I think one of the things that I get so upset about for myself is that I didn't really think about this issue before we started to talk about the police station. Because it really is, it should have come before we talked about the police station because we know that there have been issues, um, at the school. We know that, um, you know, uh, the town barn also has some issues, I believe, um, you know, with, uh, with water concerns. And I think that, um, if, if it's the intention of the town to build numerous projects on there, then the land will become smaller with every well we have to dig. And, um, we won't be able to move our buildings around the way that we want them and the way they should fit on the available land. So I just, um, you know, I wanted to, like, again, bring you guys together and, and start to talk about this and have a dialogue. Um, I did reach out to, um, the schools, um, and asked, again, several questions, which I saw, I'm sorry, I received the email while I was away on the station. Um, I did forward it to Ally, um, late this afternoon, and you guys all should have it. But, you know, I wanted to, I wanted to know, um, exactly, you know, what the concerns are with the water in the school. And I asked him, how often do you test the water? Answer, we test monthly, quarterly, and annually for broad spectrum of potential contaminants. The Mass D E P outlines water sampling requirements for the school. We receive a schedule every three years or so and they're amended due, due to the, um, testing requirements. Have there been times where water quality has been a concern? During routine water, uh, systems monitoring, it was determined that the well, waters from our wells had somewhat low pH level. Under direct oversight of the Mass D E P, a lime soda ash treatment system was installed to maintain proper pH levels, um, and that was installed in two thousand eight, two thousand nine. When the family of chloroform is detected, a protocol from the Mass D E P of testing and retesting is followed to determine which bacteria strain was detected and to discover if there are any issues with water quality. No E. coli has been, um, has been found at this time. And it does go on, we can't open it up. Oh, there it is. When was the last well replaced? Answer, the well on the west side of the facility was replaced in twenty fourteen. The well on the north side was, um, replaced in twenty twelve. So typically, you can see that we've already replaced two wells over there. When do you feel the next, um, well will need to be replaced? Typically, a well and a pump assembly will last, um, about six to ten years. So, um, we had one in twenty twelve, and another one in twenty fourteen, so we're gonna be seeing something relatively soon. How much money in testing has been spent on, uh, how much money has been test, spent on testing and well replacements? He gave us, um, an attachment, there's about six thousand dollars, um, just on testing alone.
I was gonna say, a well is gonna be seventy grand.
Yeah, and he did say that.
And that's a commercial well, so it's gonna be bigger.
Right. Um, do you feel the school would benefit from tying into the water line? Yes, I feel the school would benefit from a municipal water line. There are several benefits from tapping into the water main, first and foremost, fire suppression. As an added benefit, it would reduce man-hours and fiscal maintenance dollars. I didn't have any other questions at that time. I'm sure that if anybody has any questions, you can, um, once you receive the email, tag it and, um, forward it and ask them any other questions. But, um, it's really, I feel, is more of a town issue. Um, I feel that we have the money and, and the capability to do this. Borrowing is relatively low right now. And I, I feel if, if the town is going to move forward with any other projects in that area, my belief is that, um, this should be done regardless of whether we build a police station or not. That's my personal feeling. Questions?
Well, it would, it would certainly benefit the water department. We have a possibility of all with customers coming up Chase Road and on and off Chase Road all the way, so it, you know, would help us, um, for new customers. And, uh, you know, that's always a benefit to the town too. So, um, we'll, you know, I can speak for the guys, that we would certainly work with you and help you, you know, with the project, you know. Basically, it's the town project, so, you know.
Right.
We'd be glad to do what we can to help.
I mean, I myself, as a water commissioner, have no objection whatsoever to this. But I mean, it's, it's a selectmen's decision, I, I think, and I, I, uh, have no objection to it whatsoever. I mean, like Bob said.
We had, we didn't, as a water commissioner, have any plans for this expansion up here because as you well know, we're dealing with Far River, we're trying to be on the right track with Far River. But when you think about it, and I said on the Board of Selectmen, we always talked about, at some point, this is gonna be the hub. And certainly, you can't do it with wells. And this would be an ideal thing to do, if, if that's what the Board of Selectmen chooses to do because you're tapping into a twelve-inch main off of, right at the end of Brayley and Chase. And you'll have sufficient water up here that, in, in the future, you could head either way. And you're, and you're not dealing with, you're dealing with the New Bedford water system. And there's no treatment at all that we have to do to the New Bedford water. It's, it's good water, it comes right up. They haven't got a PH emission.
At one point, they had the best water quality in the country.
So, I mean, certainly, if this is where you choose to go, you know, we'll be right behind you to, you know, work with you and get it done. But that's, that's a decision that only the Board of Selectmen can make.
And if you ever decide to come up the other way, there would be a ten inch coming up the other way and a twelve inch coming this way. So, um, you'd have a loop and then you could always decide if you ever wanted to extend it down further, you know what I mean?
Would we come down Chase to Memorial and then go up Memorial with a stub here in Chase? So that way, we could expand it down further, bring it down Chase if we wanted to, towards?
Well, that would help probably fire insurance. I mean, fire insurance for people would probably go down.
Because if hydrants closer.
And hydrant, and if you put a hydrant up here on Bullock Road, that would affect Bullock Road too.
Well, for future expansion, I think we'd, we'd leave a stub in Chase.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, absolutely. At the end, uh, as far as we go on Chase, put a stub so they can, they can pick up on it. And you're gonna have a line going up to, to the schools in, in.
Well, on Memorial.
If we leave it in Memorial, not go on the property, we can then tap this side, the police station CEO.
You could go with a stub, I mean, you could go with a stub up, or, or line up Memorial and then stop it at Bullock Road, yeah.
Then if it had one, if it went either way on Bullock.
It could go.
I wonder if the feels with, uh, whatever that, I wonder if they, they would be interested.
They would tie in, it'd be crazy notion.
Of course, they, sprinklers and everything.
Typically, um, when you're looking at this, you use a little bit of foresight and you say, okay, on this size, we probably wanna leave a, a minimum of two-inch stub.
Yep.
Maybe even a two-inch and then a one-inch, for, one for domestic and one just for sprinklers. The school's the same thing, you know, you'll probably have to look at what their usage is, or this is the stub we're gonna leave there. That's, you know, when it's engineered and designed, that, those, but we own multiple properties on, you know, on Chase Road. So we'd always wanna ensure that whatever we leave there is gonna be sufficient for its potential use. But yeah, that would be my suggestion.
Well, just take this facility here. This facility and the police station share a well.
Right.
And if I remember, a couple of years ago, there was an issue with the well for a short period of time where they had, I think the police station had, didn't have any water, they didn't have any water.
That's correct.
They were pumping sand, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there was, um, there was a, it was a crisis in town. This was being used, uh, as, during the emergency and the draw on the water resulted in no water at the police station where we needed a twenty-four-hour emergency operation.
And then what do you have? You have two, two town, two town buildings, one having to do with safety of the folks and one, another one having to do with, how do we take care of them?
How do we take care of people?
And, and we run, and we run out of water.
Right.
Personally, I think it should be just a completely separate issue.
I agree, I agree.
The, the police station is a, is a needed facility and that shouldn't be jeopardized
Nope.
by this, this project, okay?
I agree.
So this project can, if this project can be handled without borrowing or whatever you guys plan on doing it, I mean, that would be a benefit for the whole town because eventually, you're gonna put more buildings up there.
Um, fire suppression too, for the, for the school, I was under the understanding there's a, a cistern that they use for reserve water. That's a, has like a thirty-year lifecycle. They're pretty far into that lifecycle, like twenty-seven years into that lifecycle. So that'd be a major, um, amount of money the school would have to spend to redo that tank every thirty years. So this might be the time, you know, to help have them come on board with us and, and get this done.
But when you say the school, under our regional agreement, we're responsible for anything over five thousand dollars capital expenditure. So, we're gonna pay for it anyway. If they have to put a new system because it's, it's at the end of its life, town of Free Town's gonna have to pay for it. It's, you know what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, I know.
Right, we own the building, we're responsible for it, right, right.
Right, so.
So it behooves us to just do it and do this.
Do it and do it the right way.
Right.
So you have a.
Bring in the lodge line.
Well, you know, it has great merit. I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna argue there. I think we, um, should look more into actually getting stable facts about the cost. And, you know, and, uh, oh, uh, the, the cost and how quickly it can be done and so forth. And once we get that, then we have, you know, a good idea of, you know, how to handle the situation, how to pursue it. I mean, eventually, it's gonna have to be done. And like, the, the school has this thirty thousand gallon cistern. The proposal and the police station development is the same thing. And, you know, it kind of is redundant and it's kind of, it lacks real good sense. So I mean, I, I'm, I'm for looking into it and seeing what we can do, you know. The, the bottom line is the cost and how it, it offsets, it offsets other issues that we have. But one of the things that we have to all agree is, we're, we're basically limiting the land now with two wells.
Yeah.
Well, three, three wells, the, the school's two wells. And, you know, that land is now not developed, uh, developable because of the wells.
Each well will have a four-hundred-foot diameter, public drinking water.
I was just gonna say that.
No activity, okay? And then further out from that, uh, you have to limit whether through zoning or whatever, the other types of activity they can go on. So it could be very restrictive should we want to do anything else up there. Just a point of interest, I read in the newspaper today, Florida Herald News, uh, town of Westport's building a new, new police station. Just a point of interest, I read in the newspaper today, Florida Herald News, Town of Westport's building a new police station that's hit a little bit of a snag in that their well isn't producing enough water for them. So they're having to go back in, spend some more money, refrack, and hopefully, they're gonna be able to get the rain volume that they need. I'd hate like heck for us to build a facility up here and then, you know, five years down the road, realize that, oh, shoot, we've got an issue and we can't find the water for it.
If we get the right figures, so for the Town of Freetown contracts to, or the water commissioner contracts to the Town of Freetown with Environmental Partners, they don't, that's the company that were very instrumental in setting up the dynamics and the model so we could alleviate our THM problems this past year. And that model continues to provide us with very beneficial information so we can continue for the next three years and be done with our issue. But what I'm saying is that we can get those figures, you guys can get those figures, certainly, David can get those figures through Environmental Partners.
Right.
They'll come up and do, they'll tell us, they'll tell you guys, they'll tell the town exactly what we're gonna need in the car.
Ryan Trahan is the guy that we deal with all the time.
He's a great guy and you've already spoken to him, right?
I have, yes.
On a different issue.
What I remembered before is the fact, I believe, that the highway surveyor was about ready to repave Chase Road. So now would be the time to dig it up.
Before he repaves it.
Before he repaves it.
So...
There would be a lot of coordination between the water line, the construction of the police station, which we're behind schedule a little bit right now anyway, and then the coordination with the highway surveyor and whatever projects he has under chapter 90 going forward.
I'm sure he could probably put it off a little bit till they put the water line in.
Bobby, Bobby?
To my opinion, I think we're all on the same page. And I think we should have a motion to go forward with exploration of the project. And I'd like to make that motion.
All right, on favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, so let's know what you need.
Well, we'll see you tomorrow. I'll see you.
And to be clear, you guys at the last meeting voted that if you're gonna see a water line, in your opinion, it would be best brought up Chase Road.
Yes.
We already voted on it.
You did.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
You can.
Do you want a cookie for the road?
Give him the box, you know, we're gonna take it anyhow.
So I take a cookie for the road and, I say, I know, you'll see my wife and say, he took two cookies that night.
He took the box. I'm gonna get you a truck, I'm gonna go all out.
There you go.
Are you gonna second the motion?
I'll second it.
I think he was saying...
Any discussion?
No.
I'm waiting to find out the cookie.
All in favor, yes. Bye.
The cookie, yes.
The cookie monster.
Oh, boy. Cookies, I thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Living sweet.
Of course, I always like to say good night.
Good night, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I know. Public discussion?
Don't know.
Same as if...
I just wanna let the board know that I text messaged Mark Rich before I got here because I haven't heard from George Pucci. He said that we should do an update tomorrow and that on January 3rd is the court.
Motion do we consider?
All right, so we should be getting, all of us should be getting an email tomorrow with an update from George. Okay, wet master. Okay, did you see the new Star Wars movie?
Of course I did.
I know.
Stay that night, midnight.
No, plenty spoilers.
Oh, don't worry.
You don't die. Oh, no, I already, I already knew from the first trailer someone was gonna die.
You still know who?
Yeah, I did.
Was it all that you thought it was gonna be?
Absolutely.
Okay, you're on.
Well, I received an email on November 2nd, was the very first one, from Virtual Towns and Schools, saying that the platform, the website runs on, which is an older platform, is being discontinued on, or end of life has been set for January 31st, 2019.
It sounds ominous, end of life.
I know, right? That's what I thought.
I know, maybe David. Sorry, David.
I first misread it, thought it was, you know, next month, oh, God. But it's a paid upgrade to, to do it. And the new up, the upgrade adds all sorts of new functionality for the website. And since we kind of have to do it if we're gonna stick with BTS, they do offer a flexibility discount of $600 if we sign on by the end of the year. It's $3,000 with the discount, it'd be $2,400. And they do allow you to spread out the payments over three fiscal years, but as we were talking with David, I don't know if that's possible.
Yeah, it's just small amount, I wouldn't even like...
That'd be a one-time charge.
And it is a one-time charge for that, to do the upgrade.
The platforms, it'll be able to handle iOS and...
Yep, yep, it's fully adapted.
Currently, it's a little, you click on a tab, doesn't wanna drop.
Exactly, and if you go on your phone, it cuts off this awful mobile version. But the new version, the new platform is adaptive, so it looks different on your phone.
Okay.
It scales.
Yeah, it scales.
They use what they call dual power.
Yep, yep, yep. But otherwise, the most I would stay exactly the same, the same information, the same, the way we input information, just look different. It would look like completely redesigned, the whole thing.
Now, they're doing it by 2019. If we upgrade now, the upgrade will be effective now, we don't have to wait till the...
Well, the, yeah, they schedule it. I don't know what exactly that would be. If we do the discounted option, they will schedule it sometime between now and July 1st, 2018. Otherwise, if we do the $3,000 option, it is, they will schedule it in as timely manner as possible based on the date we sign up. All right, so it's really up to the board.
I'll make a motion, we go ahead with the upgrade for the $2,400.
On favor? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Also, while I'm here, I spoke to Scott about...
Oh, wait a second.
It's relevant to the website.
Okay.
I spoke to Scott about getting a wired connection down here for live streaming. So hopefully, starting with New Year, sometime, sometime in January, one of the January meetings, I'll be able to get that.
That upgrade, upgrade for July 2018, you know? Different upgrade.
We just wanna make sure that when we do the police station, that we're all set with all of that stuff, too.
It'll all be Cat 5, Cat 6.
I agree.
It's, it's pretty much, when you're building houses now, you put Cat 5, Cat 6.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Discuss off a letter from Department of Conservation and Recreation for parcels 240-4 and 240-5.
David, your turn.
Yep. Okay, we have received a letter from the Mass, Chase's Department of Conservation, basically offering the town $50,000 parcels, 240-4 and 240-5, which are essentially the abandoned house and the land. I got some pictures if anybody wants to take a look at it. In the earlier discussion and motion that was made and accepted by an earlier town meeting, the offer had been $150,000, but also involved a substantially greater parcel, the three of the parcels of land that were anticipated to be purchased at that time, that are now not going to be purchased. Because they have been unable to verify the titles and as that, as a result, they have removed those parcels from... They removed the parcels from the offer. The offer is contingent upon cleaning up by the town all debris and material on the land to the satisfaction of DCR. I had a discussion with them regarding that today because I was concerned about some of the items that were on the parcel, including a couple of tractor trailer trucks, a large wooden boat. And we were able to agree that they will take off any item that is, requires a heavy piece of equipment to remove. So anything that we can remove by hand, that will be included, that we, that will do. It also involves a vote of town meeting to transfer the custody management and control of parcels 2118, I'm sorry, 218-1, 218-5, and 229-8 to the Freetown Conservation Commission to be used as open space in perpetuity permanently. And that the transaction must be completed by March 1st, 2018 in order to, for the state to actually get the grant funds to purchase not only this property, but the other properties that they're negotiating with, with individual landowners. One recommendation that I made today to Sean was that we probably would want to go back and include as part of the motion because they did give us an article to put on town meeting to rescind the earlier vote because that vote is still out there identifying not only the offer, but also the other parcels of land. So incorporate that into the new article rescinding that previous vote of town meeting.
Questions, concerns, comments?
David, 244 and 245, do you have any idea what the total acreage?
I do not, actually. I, I, the, I know it's the parcel with the house, I have, you know, I've walked a little bit of it. I don't know, Mike, two acres?
It's about two acres, about an acre for each parcel.
So four acres, so...
And...
They're gonna demolish the house.
In the amount of land that they found that they couldn't clear through title, do you know how much that was?
That was about 120 acres.
120 acres.
That they couldn't clear that the...
Yeah, when I came in before and I said I was able to find parts of it there, much better paid title attorneys were only able to find the same things that I were able to find, I was able to find, so...
So the amount of the crop, you take 5, 25, something in that area of land they wanna buy?
Total amount, we, Conservation Commission was notified today as in a butter that surveyors are gonna be out. I believe you guys got the same letter that we did. And in total, they're gonna be acquiring around 511 acres when all is said and done, if all the different puzzle pieces fill in.
I kinda have an issue that they're changing, you know, we've come to this potential agreement and now they're changing things and it's more and more on us and the price is going drastically down.
I agree.
Yeah, and I, I kinda, so we're selling them 500-plus acres. They originally wanted, we'll say, 6, 650, they're getting 625 now. And the price has gone down by two-thirds.
So the, the other parcels that are gonna be incorporated into the parts they're buying are being purchased from individual landowners?
The total amount they were gonna buy from us was somewhere in the neighborhood of, call it 125. And now they're asking to buy only about two acres and that the other 123 be transferred to the Conservation Commission because it had insufficient title for a purchase. So the remaining, the other 400-something is coming from private parties that's not town land.
But, well, if I could just...
Go ahead, you have it.
I, I've walked the property. And there's a, on that acre, two-acre piece of property where the house is, there's a large number of different items like tires and motors and all kinds of stuff. And now, they were going to originally clean up, and now they want us to do it. So we're getting less and less.
Turning it up there $50,000.
And not only do they want us to do it, but there's, there's a couple, there's a line here that really scares...
Number two?
It says, "To the satisfaction of DCR."
Right.
So if they don't like how we cleaned it up, then we need to either go back and address the issue that they don't necessarily like or, and, or, and at, and at that point, it costs us even more money.
Right. And, I mean, there, there's probably not a lot to the land, even through tax title.
And, yeah, number two, potentially.
Now we're getting, now we're getting down to the point where it would be, even behoove us to sell a tax title.
By what I read, number two is it, we have to guarantee there's no environmental contamination is found beyond what's typically associated, such as lead or asbestos out of the building.
They're actually doing that test.
So they're gonna do the, the testing, or are they gonna do the mediation, remediation?
Yes, because they're gonna, when they knock down the house, they're gonna take out if there's lead or asbestos.
But it says, "The revised offer is contingent upon the following." So that means that there, if there is something found, that they're, they're gonna, they're gonna back it up. I don't like the way it's worded at all.
I did ask them about that today. And it was my understanding, in talking to Sean, that they were taking responsibility for whatever was in the house.
Well, then it needs to be said, it needs to be stated.
And I was concerned because I had heard there were barrels up there. And that has, there aren't any barrels up there. There's one supposedly filled with cement, that's the only barrel. Because I was concerned what would be in the barrels.
We got it.
What was in the barrel.
What was in the barrel.
But it's just that there's a lot of, there's a lot of manpower, manpower work.
Yeah, I did, I did talk to Chuck and Chuck said he would be willing. He said he'd probably need three dumpsters to go up and put his guys on it.
If we're gonna do it for nothing, and not saying it will not, $50,000 is gonna get eaten up pretty quick. But if we're gonna do it for nothing, I'd rather give it to Conservation than give it to the state.
I agree.
But I don't wanna make that motion tonight, I wanna see what the state has to...
Yeah, I need to digest this a little bit more.
I'd like to get a little more clarification.
Yeah.
I can have Sean come in.
No, I don't want him in. I mean, we can have him in if you guys want. I just, I want, see, it's easy to say what somebody said, it's like hearsay sort of. I need that in black and white. So then that way, anything that you sign is, yeah, exactly.
Especially contamination. And when are they gonna do site, are they gonna look at the site to see what's on the ground? Are we gonna be reliable for that?
And I agree with you, I'd rather just give it to Freetown Conservation Commission because that, then that's ours. You know what I mean? It's not anybody else.
We control what happens.
I agree. Charlie, you okay with that, waiting?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't, right now, I wouldn't vote for it.
Yeah, I agree, neither would I.
So...
It's not that rare.
I'm in.
Do we need a motion to take no action or do we just take no action? Madam Chair, do we need a motion to take no action or do we just not take?
No, no action.
Okay.
Okay, discuss and sign Middleborough PEG agreement?
We have received a, an agreement from Middleborough, it's a five-year agreement. A couple of things, one is...
Can you hold, one thing that we're gonna have to make sure, sorry, just write this down in your notes, though, that we're gonna have to, one way or the other, rescind the, the previous town meeting vote, regardless, we're gonna have to rescind that.
Right now, we're still good. If they, if they come back and something cleans up or changes, that's still in effect.
They're not gonna buy the other parcels.
The dirty parcels?
Right, they're not gonna, so that...
They're not gonna buy the individual parcel.
That needs to be changed regardless, okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but I wanted to make sure I remembered to do that.
Do you wanna do that as a vote right now? Because that we can do.
It's town meeting vote.
We make a motion to put an article on the town meeting to have it removed.
As long as we don't forget, that's happened before. Remember?
Well, it goes on to do if...
Okay.
Have, we have a town meeting folder, better than...
That's fine, remember that? Okay, discuss and sign Middleborough, sorry, PEG agreement, go ahead.
We had gotten a, it's a standard agreement we had entered into previously for $5,000 per year. And it provides us with the services to broadcast, selectmen's and other meetings. A couple of things, one is that our cable contract is up in 2020. So I don't know if we wanna extend it, number one, if we were to do that, to extend it beyond 2020 because we don't know specifically what we're gonna be able to negotiate as part of the cable contract. The second thing is, we did receive an alternative bid, which I'm not gonna discuss tonight, from another, well, Lake, is it Lake?
Lake.
Yes, and that's something I feel at this point, we should sit down and, and I can review and bring it back to the board and make some recommendation on that. The third alternative is that we have over $66,000, I believe, in, actually, I can take these after all. $63,633 in our cable access account. And maybe explore the possibility of being able to do that internally. And, you know, for $5,000 plus hiring somebody for the meeting which is an additional cost as well as SD cards and all of the other things that are associated with that. There might be an easier way to do it, less money. So what I'd like to do is have the board... So what I'd like to do is have the, the board, um, I can contact, um, Middleboro and see if we can get like a one-month extension while we review our options, and, uh, put it on, on, uh, just lay it on the table and for, uh, the next meeting of the week after, the meeting after that, and I can come back with some firm recommendations regarding what we, uh, can look at in terms of potential proposals regarding the broadcasting of the, the selectmen and other meetings, town meetings.
If we can't put it off too long, it feels like.
We won't have any, we won't have any access to anything if we put it off, right?
I'm gonna talk to Middleboro and see if we can just extend it by a month, is while we review everything.
Okay, and?
That would be my intent, if they say no, then that's gonna, that would be a problem.
Right.
So we could do two motions, one to extend, and if the extension is not a viable option, two.
Then one to sign.
To sign for.
But do you really wanna sign for the five years?
No.
No.
I think we, we either make it for one year.
Yeah, a year.
Or year by year, until we figure it out.
Yeah.
Gotta go to town meeting for five years. I think it's only a three-year contract, unless there's something different with cable work. Isn't it typical, most contracts and agreements?
Yeah, that, yeah.
It's a three-year.
That's a good point, but.
I think we do it annually.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think annually, so good, you can make it, so it's two motions.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to extend for thirty days, um, with, uh, PEG, Middleboro PEG, to extend the, uh, agreement for thirty days. I'll do that as motion one.
All in favor?
Aight. And motion two, if motion one is not accept, um, acceptable by PEG, is make a one-year, one-year agreement with PEG for the contract, cable contract, ending December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen.
I'll second that.
And that would be only if, if the thirty days not agreeable.
Four thousand? Five years is five thou, well.
No, it's a five thousand a year.
Five thousand per year.
Five thousand a year, so, for the.
So the same five thousand per year.
For the same five, okay. All right.
The first motion would have been pro rate of five thousand divided by thirty days.
Second, all in favor?
Aight.
Okay. All right, Town Minister's report.
Uh, I just wanted to update, uh, the board, uh, we did have a department head meeting about a week or so ago, and, uh, all the budget materials have been distributed to all of the, uh, various departments, uh, committees and boards. Couple things that came up, one is that there is interest in conducting a town auction, and, uh, Kim had given me a list of, uh, potential items, I'm gonna forward that out to, uh, the various, uh, departments with the approval of the board, uh, to, uh, see what other items that are out there that can be included in, in a surplus auction. The board will then, once they have the final list together, the board will have to then declare those items surplus equipment, and then we can handle it, uh, either through, uh, some kind of a bulletin board auction, whether we wanna hire an auctioneer and have it one day, uh, there's a whole bunch of different ways that you can do the auction, but it, if, if there's materials out there that we're no longer using, and they, they have some salvage value to them, uh, that is, uh, a thing that I would like to see done.
So when will you have the list for, uh, the board to declare a surplus?
I'm hoping the first meeting in, in January.
Okay.
Will we be doing lands also, or just, um?
I'm sorry?
Lands also, or just?
No, just so, this is all like capital equipment, kind of, full trucks and copiers and things like that.
Okay.
Uh, we, uh, I'm pleased to report that, uh, we, uh, are now accepting credit cards in the Treasure of Collect the Department, uh, thanks to Jess, uh, she's done a great job, helping to coordinate that through Union Bank, um, we're gonna put the town clerk online next, and then hopefully, um, get the, uh, transfer station up and running. We're try, we're trying to time it so that we can, um, do it in, in a way that won't be disruptive, and as we learn, they learn, so that's pretty good. Uh, the lean-to, uh, uh, for the highway gas pumps is completed, if you're driving by and you wanna take a look at that. And the Vadar is installed, so we're in the cloud on our accounting software, so those things were, things that came out of the depart, previous department head meeting that are, that we're closing in, are finishing. Uh, Ally and I sat down with Meyer, uh, to discuss the insurance renewal, uh, we're gonna be continuing to pursue that, there are different options, uh, that have been presented, um, by our insurer, regarding additional insurance and regarding, uh, sort of melding certain insurances, uh, together, and, uh, we're gonna be exploring that and bringing it back to the board. Uh, I have set up a, um, first-time homebuyers and housing rehab program informational center to be healthier at the council on aging on February twentieth. Uh, it's basically, uh, two programs that are offered, uh, that offer assistance to renovate, does the housing rehab program for, particularly for, for seniors, it seems, that, uh, they, uh, can particularly use the money in terms of, it's a, uh, a loan that's provided, uh, no, no payments made, no interest for a certain period of time. When the property gets sold, it gets sold, uh, and then the money is repaid back to the program. First-time homebuyers is a gap financing program, so if you have a, a homebuyer that wants to buy a home and is short on, you know, the, the amount they've been approved on, you can do the gap financing, it's a second position type of mortgage. So they're gonna come out and explain the program, I set up two different, um, seminars because I, I, I wanted, you know, to, for, one day in the afternoon for, uh, people that come to the seniors' center, but also one in the evening for other people that may, uh, be working during the day and might be interested in either one of the programs, so.
So did you say this was specifically for seniors?
No, it's not specifically, uh, just, just from my historical perspective, when I was in Plymouth, I was the community development director, and the majority of the people who took advantage of the home, the housing rehab program were senior people, they were, you know, they, they, you know, particularly because of the income guidelines, were able to qualify for the program, and, and they didn't have the extra funds to do, it's usually code violations, like a roof is leaking, or the windows are broken, or they're, you know, not airtight, any kind of code violation that might be applicable, and it's a great program, because they don't have to put any money out, they can stay in their home, and, uh, they don't have to worry about it until the house finally gets sold, so. Um, we, uh, did get an update on the electrical aggregation, um, program, I have that here, um, and we posted a press release, uh, on the website, and on, um, I keep on that sheet, just basically explaining the new program, it's a two-year agreement with power, uh, supply, uh, the, the amount that they're charging is point one oh, one one, I think, and Eversource is, I believe, point one two, uh, there's certain procedures by which, you know, the people who are already in the program don't have to opt out or, or sign up again, and I just wanted the board to let them, you know, to know, we've been, uh, answering calls about that, um, from interested residents saying, you know, what do I do that I'm interested in now, uh, participating, and we've been able to at least direct them in, in the direction of helping them to sign up or opt out.
Do you know when the mail is supposed to go out, 'cause there's supposed to be an individual house mailer?
Uh, okay, here it is again. Okay. Here, the, the way they describe it, they said, uh, if you're currently in the program, no actions required to continue to, to participate. If you opted out of the original program, you will not be sent an opt-out letter, and you will not be ruled in the new contract, however, you still may join the program by contacting Public Power, tell, say, if you are on basic service with Eversource and not have previously opted out, you will be sent an opt-out letter, which details the program, and then, uh, residents who wish to opt out into the program, including revenant, residents who previously opted out, or are currently with a third-party supplier, may still join the program by contacting Public Power. So, um, and the actual rates are, yeah, it's point one oh, one to two, and then Eversource is at point one three, one five seven, so this is a saving.
Per war.
Yeah.
You don't know when the actual mail is supposed to go out, though?
I, I honestly don't, that, that's all under the direction of, uh.
Right.
Public Power.
Okay.
Uh, I'm meeting tomorrow with Mary Brown, uh, to talk about the concrete floor in schoolhouse, that's the window project, we're still finishing that up, but, um, we're anxious to get that part of it done, because we wanna get some space available in there for record storage, uh, out of the, uh, town hall. And finally, I just wanna say, uh, thank you to the Highway Department and Highway Surveyor, Chuck McComber, for all the help that he provided to, uh, remove all the stuff that was in the basement in order to get the area prepped to do the concrete work, so, they were helpful, they, they got down there, they did the heavy and dirty work, so, I wanna recognize them for doing that.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
Um, yes, one, uh, where are we with the boiler on Station Two?
Uh, we are in the process of purchasing, oh, take it back, we, uh, the Finance Committee's gonna be meeting tomorrow night, they didn't have a quorum at their last meeting, so they couldn't approve the transfer, the meeting tomorrow night to hopefully approve the transfer. Uh, in the case that they, for some reason, don't, uh, approve the transfer, uh, we do have money available in the capital, um, um, budget account, or building account, so either way, it's gonna get done, it has to get done, there's no choice in that matter. So we started, we, actually, today, we ordered all of the, the parts and supplies to, um, for the boiler and all the ancillary piping and all of that, so we're, we're, it's on a fast track.
Is it the capital building project account, or is it the, just the building department account?
So it's gonna be the building department, not capital, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I didn't mean to.
What, what was that quote?
Uh, the, the bill on the, um, um, the equipment, it was like eighty-nine hundred, I don't have the actual bill on the, the labor that's gonna be involved, it's gonna be less than twenty-five thousand dollars, I know that, and it could even be lower than that. I can get you an exact amount tomorrow, if you want, like an email.
Just email, okay. It'd be eighty-nine, though, see what the labor is.
All right. Water health?
We have the issue of, we've got some potential peer review, and, so, open it up, I think Rob had a, 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 a,
And since we're, none of us are water health people and don't know exactly which ones we should be concerned about and which ones we shouldn't be, there's water levels, system over water levels, foot from septic to well, we know what the state allows, we know what we allow, but which ones we should really be worried about, which ones we shouldn't. They brought up to me, which I thought was a good point, well, he, I should say, that we should have peer review, like Berkeley, and maybe something to consider until our, until Derek, our health agent gets more well-versed, he just went through the class about two months ago, three months ago, which he attended, he passed, he did excellent job with, but until you've seen it, until you've done it, until you.
Yeah.
You don't know what is a fatal error and which ones aren't. So, and I don't mean fatal as in death, I mean which ones we should be allowing, which ones we should have more restrictions on. So I think it is a temporary option, we should consider peer review. We do currently have environmental partners as our environmentalists on staff, well, on retainer. I don't know if that's where we want to go, if we want to contract out, we want to see who else, you know, whether we need that much behind it, firepower behind it. It shouldn't be something that's extremely cost prohibitive, which I don't normally think it is. I think Berkeley charges, their firm is like a hundred and twenty-five dollars for a review, and it's basically they take the plan, they review what the lots, the soil lots are and all that, and come up and say, yes, we concur, and no, you know, we don't. How do we actually go about it, where to start, I'm not sure, but I think it's something we should consider.
So what is the cost involved in that, and who would?
The applicant would be at the cost.
Okay, so the applicant would be at the cost. And who is, who right now helps Derek? If he's, if Derek's out, who's on?
I don't want to make that.
Okay.
No one right now.
He was trying to get a person from Paul River that is in the plant, the health department there, as a backup. I don't know if he ever.
I'm sure you're with Jimmy Aggie, I resigned.
Right.
Couple of months ago.
Right. So with that person, if we had a backup, one with experience, would that person be almost like a peer review person?
Well, you would need a peer review engineer.
Or at least somebody to go to, I mean, there are circumstances where it's really cut and dry, and then, you're right, there are circumstances where, you know, you're on the pond, or, you know, there are other issues that are involved, you, two goes to this neighbor, or whatever, whatever the case may be, those, those, I mean, is there going to be a criteria when it should go to peer review, or are we now going to say that everything should go to peer review until Derek gets acclimated?
It's not, variances don't come up very often.
Right.
Usually they're pretty benign, usually they're setback issues, the state requires fifty feet between well and sewer.
Right.
We require a hundred, which is standard for our area around here. But what I'm more concerned about is feet from existing foundation. Well, I don't know the soil types, whether that's going to come back into the foundation and seep into the, into the residence, so we're potentially soiling our residence. I don't know feet over, what kind of constructions are going in to feet of a water table, is that appropriate, should that be raised? The engineer's going to come in to its best for a stamp, but also for the client. So those are the issues that I have, that we kind of just pass on the advice of the engineer side by the applicant, and they do have a diligence to perform because they are stamped, but there might be better system, a better system design that we don't know about, because that's not what we do.
Or it may not be what that engineer specifically does as well.
Right.
I, I think it's kind of, it's a good idea. I think.
Charlie's the chair.
That, oh, not only does it protect us and the general public, but it also protects the homeowner who's having this system built that is somebody else looking at it, it's not, I mean, we've never had, I've never felt any, oh, engineer has come in and, you know, pulled the wool over our eyes or tried to, but I think it's for, you know, if the sum is basically a hundred and twenty-five dollars, something like that, I have no issue with that. I think it's a good idea, probably even a good idea to keep doing it. But I think we could probably do a little bit, Rob says Berkeley does it, what do they actually charge?
Estimating.
He's estimating, so if we can get a little bit of more input on some other places, I would say.
Yes, I know this is a few, Mr. Chairman, is it okay if we have a question or public comment on this? I just, I did, it's another, it's another hundred and twenty-five dollars to have somebody, and if I'm, if I'm hearing correctly, it's because we have somebody new on board who doesn't yet have that experience. I think it was touched upon by somebody earlier, but couldn't we just hire an assistant water health agent who does this in other towns, and they could perform the same service at no cost to the applicant? By the time we get to a variance, you paid the, you paid the engineer five grand to put in a forty thousand dollar system, to pay another several hundred dollars for public notification for a variance request, to then throw another hundred and twenty-five dollars I, it's reasonable on certain ones, I would imagine, to ask for, you know, if we had a water health agent who has been more experienced in that, and God bless, I love Derek, you know, he's doing a bang-up job, and I'm sure once he gets more experience, like you said, Bob, he's going to be right there, but it almost seems like this is a shortcoming on the town's point, and why should the?
Yeah, but I don't know if it's something we should have required a long time ago, where other municipalities already have, versus something that we've always said, well, he's, I'm sure he knows, that the health agent in the past knows what he's doing, you know, he's been doing it for a long time.
If I'm not mistaken, the regulation's already allowed for peer review, so I think the Board of Health at any time could send out a particular plan for peer review. I was just, when I read the item for the agenda, it said to send out all variance requests. And again.
Well, and I think that was more where we start and then we come back to.
Sure.
What, and we can do, through the board, through the chair, look at the other towns that do it and say, what do you do, which ones are benign and you don't need to, which ones are more in seven weeks, we should be taking a closer look at and saying, you know, these, you know, soil levels, soil compaction levels are this, this is the variance they want, is this what we should be doing? There's a, I don't think it's black and white, everything should go, but I don't think that nothing should go.
All right, so I'll go back to my original statement. What would be the criteria to send one off? That would be number one. Number two is, you were talking about Berkeley, does Berkeley have an assistant water health agent? I mean, maybe that's why they send it out for peer review.
I believe the same one we had is the one they have, I don't know, he resigned from them.
Right, so, right, so maybe that, I mean, maybe that's one of the reasons why I like, and I started the conversation by saying, like, yeah, is our peer review person the person that with the most knowledge that should be in our, in our office, like, but that we just lost? I mean, we did the same thing with Kevin Bernato, right? I mean, he had somebody in his office, and it took him a while, but he, he did become acclimated to everything. And really, in all the time that I've been here, no one's ever come back with a problem or, or an instance where there's been, you know, a mess up or, or something like that, but it could be because we've always had two. And if somebody, if you're not certain, then you should actually say something, and then that, send it in for a peer review, or ask whoever our assistant water health agent is, and I think that's something we really need to take care of, is get an assistant first, too.
But all due respect to our health agent, he is not a peer of an engineer, an engineer peer is an engineer. It'd be like saying, having a doctor's decision being peer reviewed by a nurse, they have, both have medical training, they both are qualified in their skills, it's not the same peer review. An engineer peer review, when an engineer comes in with a plan and tells us this is what is allowable, this is what, you know, is right to do, is a common practice, we're taking his word at it. Now, granted, you're right, the health agent should be able to look at and say, no, we don't really do that here, but he's not a peer to an engineer. So, and another engineer would say, no, that's against public, that's against the common way we do things in our, in our field. So that's why I was saying peer review. You're conflating the two and saying a peer, you know, building inspector, part-time building inspector, which we need, we need somebody to fill in for Derek, something happens to Derek, we have nobody again. That is, to me, it's two separate issues.
One of my concerns, I don't, I don't have a problem with, Rob said, you know, setbacks and so forth. Sometimes, though, you know, we hear, okay, the water level, the groundwater level was X, well, was it really X? That's.
Well, it's like, it's X, so we're going to use this type of system.
Right.
We're going to use these type of diffusers, we're going to use this, okay, but that doesn't, that's Greek to me, I don't know what that means, you know, should we be using those diffusers? Is that common for that, that type of soil samples? You know, we, we require four feet over the water table, we're going into two feet, but we're going to use, you know, X, Y, Z diffuser to get, because, I don't know.
Bob's right, not the internet, but Bob's right, and I've heard the same kind of complaints from installers when they go to other towns. Installers and their engineers are up to date, they go to the classes, they know the next best and greatest things, they know what's applicable, and you'll sometimes run into water health agents, water healths that aren't familiar with it, you know, Presby was the big thing years ago, and now it's, there's so many different types. And if they're not comfortable with this new technology, even though it's approved through the Mass DEP, they're sometimes hesitant to allow folks to use it, even though it might be the better one. So I get where, where the people that are talking to you, Bob, are coming from, in that, you know, sometimes, this is the best that we can do for our client, and you don't get that same kind of level of understanding of the issue on the water health side. So I think, and I'm probably speaking too much already on this, but I think a happy meeting.
Well, I'd be willing to sit down with Derek and talk, first of all, see where we might have a potential for a assistant agent. And the other thing is to see what other towns do about peer review and how they react to it. It's not going to be that parroted that we do it tonight or anything like that.
Right, so why don't you find out that, and then, and then the cost involved, because I'm really leery about adding another cost to a homeowner that, you know, if it's going to be a five hundred dollars, if it's seventy-five hundred, seventy-five dollars is one thing, you're talking five hundred dollars and up, that's a totally different story.
You said a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
I believe that's.
That doesn't seem all that onerous, but like I said, it's just at the end of everything else that.
But, I mean, we're not doing it to, we're doing it to them to make sure they're getting paying for the system they're getting, you know, and it's going to not fail for them or in a couple of years because it's not correctly designed.
Yes, it's a benefit to them.
It's a benefit to them.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're going to bring that information back?
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you. Personnel board?
Personnel board.
Toodles.
Employee change of status report for Brittany Normandy. If you remember correctly, remember at the last meeting, we voted to increase the, sorry, the chair came in, the director, you say, came in, we voted to increase the hours, this is the actual change of status forms to do it. Brittany Normandy is a library technician, rate of twenty-five dollars per, I'm sorry, rate of fourteen seventy-six per hour, she's increasing her hours from twenty-five hours a week to thirty hours a week, and we already voted to approve it, this is the change of status first.
Make a motion to sign.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Similar for Chelsea.
Chelsea.
Chelsea Hester, library technician, increasing her hours from twenty-five hours per week at fourteen seventy-six to thirty hours per week, the same salary, and we did vote on this to approve.
Make a motion to sign.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I have a letter from Joseph P. Cowing to the police chief, he's, I am writing this letter to inform you, my intentions to resign my, from my position, part-time dispatcher trainee, effective immediately, I have already made notification to dispatch supervisor, I sincerely appreciate the opportunity that you, Mrs. Susan, and Chief Sylvia have given me to train as a free town police and fire dispatch, dispatcher. I will continue to work for the Free Town Police Department as a reserve police officer and will not be resigning from that position. Thank you again for giving me the opportunity, and I apologize for any inconvenience this may have caused. And I have a change of status form for Mr. Cowing, dispatch trainee at fourteen forty-three an hour, and that's a resignation submitted by the chair.
I'll make that motion.
Sign. Motion.
Second. I didn't know if you finished your one.
Motion made in second to sign the letter, the change of status form. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chief, we have Mr. Drinkwine on here, want to tell us a little bit about this?
Yeah, so every recruit that attends the academy, we require them to execute a reimbursement agreement. That's set forth as an exhibit within the collective bargaining agreement as well, and so that's the case with Mr. Drinkwine, who will be beginning the academy on the twenty-second of January.
Do we have a change of status to make from a student officer here, too, and just?
I believe you previously executed one.
We've already executed that. So have you, have either of you had a chance to read the agreement? I believe it's the same agreement we've signed in the past.
I have. So you made a motion?
Wait, hold on.
This is reading.
Okay, I found it. I just wanted to make sure the reimbursement part was in here, I didn't see it.
It is.
Okay, I'll second that.
Motion made in second to endorse the agreement. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. We have a letter of resignation submitted to Jackie Brown, the town clerk, it is from Paul Dunn. Let's see if I can read that. He is resigning from the tax increment board. I don't see his actual letter, too, for the resignation, just comments back and forth between himself and the town clerk. She qualifies that he is retiring, he is, he already sworn in until July. This was for the ethic compliance, ethics compliance as a board member, are you resigning from the tax increment board? Just wanted to confirm and disconfirm, as I am going to battle of this year, just no time for it right now, thanks, Paul. So I'd like to accept his letter of resignation.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion on the motion? I'd also like to send him a letter.
Yeah.
Thanking him for his service. Motion made in second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's it.
Okay, under new business, Tuesday, January second is our next meeting, do we really need to have, you know, Tuesday, January second? Is there a lot of stuff?
Yeah, Liberty, come on. We'll talk Liberty.
Liberty?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You can push him on.
I think so, too.
I mean, with the date, I mean, we can have a meeting, but if there's nothing really needed, it's a day after the holiday.
Yeah, I got you.
All right.
The other one, though, on the second was the.
There's something else I can't remember.
Marijuana, we have to work out D's for marijuana, thirty-five days, but really we don't want to get much, anything else that really won't affect that, so I'm fine with that.
Are you okay, Charlie? Do you want to meet, or unless something riveting comes up?
Yeah.
Are you going on the third?
What's the third?
Fourth.
I don't know.
Except, please.
Oh, oh.
I have to look at that.
Right.
We have the declaration surplus from.
I want to get a copy, and you wanted to list that.
So as of now, we'll say no, if anything comes up, we have time to do the agenda, so.
All right. Okay, all right, here we go. I need a motion to go into executive session, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Free Town Police Association, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares, and for number two, or it's actually A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Educators Association of Free Town League, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares. On that one, I will actually leave because I don't mind any part of that, just.
So you have recued yourself on the second one?
Yes, I am.
Do you need to read the chapter sections?
But these would be from Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, A Three, both of them.
I'll make a motion, entering into executive session.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. All in favor?
Mr. Sullivan.
Aye.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mayor.
Mayor, yeah.
And.